Okay, welcome everybody. This is the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 Scranton City Council Caucus, our regular caucus that we have every Tuesday at 5:45. Today, we are once again live streaming on YouTube and we are also live on Channel 19 ECTV. We have with us today Councilman Dunnehy, Councilman Schuster, Councilman McCandrew, Dr. Rothschild is with us as well, our City Clerk Lori Reed, our Assistant City Clerk Kathy Carrera, and we have Jeff Warvath as well from the Scranton Times and Solicitor Kevin Hayes. So we are going to get started, everybody, hope that everybody's doing well and your family's doing well and are healthy. I just want to go through a couple of things and then I'll turn the floor over to all of you in case you have anything that you want to bring up in the caucus. So first thing Kevin had circulated, I don't know if everybody got a chance to see it, but Kevin had circulated the draft of the letter that we were going to send to the landfill or to the DEP regarding the expansion of the landfill. I reviewed it, I think it's great, I don't have any issues with it. So if everybody is okay with it and you've had a chance to look at it, we're going to have Kyle make a motion tonight to send that letter, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
I didn't have the chance to, but maybe I'll just look it over briefly in between our calls here, if that's your pen.
Oh, okay, yeah, if you, we could always do it next week too, if you want to take more time, take a look at it.
I think it was just sent a couple hours ago. I actually, I have a really tough time on Tuesdays, especially when I'm working because I feel like we get bombarded with emails and different things and it's really hard for me to review everything before the meeting that way when it comes in just a couple hours before the meeting time. I did kind of want to make a comment, I don't know if there's any way of limiting that in the future.
Yeah, I don't know, sometimes it's just the way the cookie crumbles unfortunately. It's Lori can probably attest to that, right Lori? Sometimes it's just the way things work out and by the time, the day of the meeting, sometimes we do get inundated with citizens' requests for whatever reason, maybe it is just because it's the day of the meeting. But we can wait until next week.
It's almost like it's the deadline and things are very busy on Tuesday, I apologize for that, Dr. Rothschild. I tried to send things out as soon as I received them, but you're right, it does seem to be there's an extra flurry of activity on the day of the meeting.
Yeah, so we can take another week, we can make the motion next week, that's fine, that works. So that was the first thing. Second thing, I know, I talked to Kevin, he's still researching the way the PUC process is going to work with the public hearing for the item we discussed last week, right Kevin?
My understanding is that they have not yet scheduled the public hearing with regard to the Pennsylvania American Water Company rate increase, but there will be a hearing where the public is allowed to voice their position on the rate increase. I'll monitor that, make sure that everybody's aware when that occurs and certainly we'll get our comments submitted as part of that process.
Okay, great, thank you. The only other thing that I have in terms of the agenda, so we do have two pieces of legislation on the agenda tonight. The first one is 5B, which is a grant that the city applied for and received for the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program. It's going to be awarded to the police department in the amount of $64,162 because, you know, of the fact that we're in the middle of this emergency and the funding is going to go towards the purchase of equipment and supplies to respond to the emergency. I was talking with Lori and Kevin a little bit about next week suspending the rules and moving that specific piece from sixth order to seventh order and voting on final passage next week rather than, since it's an ordinance, voting, we'll vote to introduce it tonight, but then voting next week in sixth order and then waiting a following week. I just think it doesn't make sense, we want to get that money to them as quickly as possible. So does anybody have any issues with that? Excuse me.
No, I agree.
Okay, so then a motion will be made next week and Lori, we can work on, and Kevin, we can work on what the language looks like, but just basically making a motion to suspend the rules and moving that piece from sixth to seventh order, okay? Kevin, I'll turn, I don't have anything else in terms of the agenda. Kevin, I'll turn it over to Kevin and then Lori to see if they have anything. Kevin, you have anything?
Other than we are working with the administration on finalizing that ordinance that I drafted, which would prohibit the interdepartmental transfer of funds which to be used for increases for salary or creation of new positions. I think that they said they would get us their final comments by next week and that way we could take it up maybe next council meeting. Was that your understanding, Bill?
Yeah, now that I'm thinking about it, based on the conversation that we had yesterday, yeah, they were going to get us their comments and suggestions by next week and then the way that it works with the deadline, we would then put it on, look, review it and then put it on the agenda then for the following week. Well, depending on when they get it to us next week, right Lori? When is the deadline, is I think Wednesday or Thursday?
Preferably Wednesday, but you know, we're working with, you know, what we have right now, so.
Okay, so we'll see when it comes in, but yeah, either next week or the following week would be my goal to get it done. Okay, good, anything else?
Councilman McCandrew, with regard to your outstanding request for the time that has been expended or the bills that have been submitted for work performed by Elizabeth Leo, I spoke with Labor Council Bob Offburg and they still are in the process of preparing and submitting their bills. His law office, like all offices are, you know, are basically closed. You don't have all of the personnel in place who normally be handling that stuff, but he wanted to acknowledge that he understands that's a request you have and that he will do his best to expedite it. But as my understanding, that it has not been submitted to the city yet.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kev. Lori, do you have anything?
Thank you, no, not at this time.
Thanks Lori, you know what, the one thing that I did want to bring up too, I can't remember now, what was the date that we were going to have to reschedule a meeting for Election Day? Was that June?
June 2nd.
June 2nd. Dr. Rothschild, you said you could meet Thursday, the 4th, correct?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, everybody else okay with Thursday, the 4th? Okay, yeah, that works for me as well. All right, yeah Lori, if we can go through the process of setting up, then we'll cancel the Tuesday meeting then on the 2nd and we'll reschedule for the 4th.
Okay, will do.
Does that work?
Sure.
All right, I don't have anything else. Kyle, do you have anything? I think you're muted, Kyle, can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
I was made aware this morning that the local government, I had it pulled up, but it went away. It's a legislative committee for local governments and they're having a meeting tomorrow, I believe. Hold on, one second. So it's a Local Government Commission Business Meeting. They meet quarterly, I guess. I was just made aware of this this morning, but so we won't have time to put in any comment for their meeting tomorrow, but I think maybe we should start discussing, maybe possibly sending a letter to them with some of our issues on, you know, what the state could help us on in terms of funding and tax structure and just develop a list of issues, I just wanted to get the ball rolling on that.
So what type of committee is this, Kyle?
It's the Local Government Commission, but they give recommendations to the state. It's a legislative committee or commission, but they only meet quarterly.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea. Anything else, Kyle?
That's all I have.
Okay, Mark?
No, nothing at this time.
Tom, you have anything?
No, nothing at this time.
Jess, anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I don't have anything else. The only thing I did want to say, just so all of you know, we received three comments from the public, which in fourth order tonight, I'll ask someone to make a motion that we enter those into the record like we always do. One from Marie Schumacher, the other from Bev DeBaros and then Fay Frannis. I just want to address one thing and I'm sure all of you are aware of this, but Ms. Schumacher stated that it's been over a month since the first round of fourth order inputs were received with the lack of responses blamed on the administration. Almost all of the questions I have asked are things that are in the budget and I can't understand why council doesn't stay abreast of these items, such that an answer could be provided within a couple of days. I just want to address two things there because this is going to be entered into the record and I will do so in the regular meeting as well. First of all, I personally responded to Ms. Schumacher with several of the questions that she had asked in terms of stormwater management, emailed her personally with some of that information, so that's number one. Number two, almost all of the questions I have asked are things that are in the budget, can't understand why council doesn't stay abreast of these items. All of the questions that anyone has asked so far have been sent to the proper and appropriate departments as Mrs. Reed can attest to. Unfortunately, we're in the middle of a pandemic and most of the workforce in City Hall has been laid off or furloughed. So getting an answer within a few days in many instances is not, you know, feasible for some of the questions that Ms. Schumacher has posed. In terms of stormwater management, she asked questions about that, I've responded to those questions. So I just don't want anyone to think that we're receiving, you know, these comments and I'm just kind of throwing them out the window because we're in a Zoom meeting and we're not in our regular confines here of City Hall chambers. Fay Frannis had asked a few questions about the garbage, the DPW. I've already forwarded those, we've already forwarded those, I believe, to the administration and she states in her comments that council members are not replying to questions. Again, a lot of the questions that are asked, we will get the answers from the administration. It's not, I can't pull the information out of thin air, I don't have it right in front of me. So that's the natural order of things. So again, I just don't want the public to think that we're not taking you seriously and not doing our best to respond to them. Anybody else before we wait until our 6:30 meeting?
Bill, you may want to announce that the residents will start receiving their bills in the mail Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, their garbage bills.
Oh, okay, sure.
And the discount period will, is through June 15.
I don't know, do I really want to announce that, Kevin?
Yeah.
I think we have to put an emphasis too on the fact that cash won't be accepted. I know that, you know, other departments have moved in that direction in the last year, but if we go back a year when the garbage bills went out a year ago, cash still was accepted.
Yeah, so we'll take a personal check, a cashier's check or a money order.
Okay, great. All right, nobody has anything else, I don't have anything else, so we will reconvene here for our regular meeting at 6:30, okay? Thanks, everybody. Okay, everyone, we're going to get started. I want to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 Scranton City Council meeting. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If everyone would please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community, let us take a special moment of silence tonight as we have for the last few weeks for people in our community and throughout the world who are suffering or who have passed away from the coronavirus. Let us think about them and their families at this time, that they may find peace. Let us think now about the doctors, nurses, researchers and all medical professionals and first responders who seek to heal and help those affected and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they find protection and peace. Whether we are home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, persist and prepare together and in place of our anxiety, let us continue to find hope and peace.
Billy, could we include Kevin Shaughnessy in our moment of silence that passed away the other day? God bless his family.
Sure. Thank you. Ms. Carrera, roll call please, sorry, I was on mute.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. Dunnehy? Mr. Dunnehy?
Sorry, Kyle, can't hear you.
Mr. Gahn?
Here, and just for the record, Kyle Dunnehy is also here. For some reason, we couldn't hear him there. Thank you, Ms. Carrera, Mrs. Reed.
Could you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Mrs. Reed, could you keep your friends with the reading of the minutes?
Thank you, third order, 3A, no business at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 13th, from 2:30 to 5:30 at the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County on 3201 Rockwell Avenue. The Friends of the Poor, Family-to-Family Food Basket Program and the Weinberg Food Bank will be hosting a COVID-19 emergency drive-through food giveaway. All attendees must remain in their vehicles and food bags will be placed directly in their vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCandrew, does anyone else have any announcements?
I just wanted to remind residents, I think I've mentioned this in a previous meeting, that the election has been moved and it's moved to June 2nd, but you can vote through mail-in ballot, so you can apply online for that mail-in ballot and it's really easy and it comes, you know, right to your home and you fill it out there and just send it back and then you're done and you've done your part and voted in the primary. So I just encourage as many people as possible to do that. And also, don't forget to complete your census. I believe the census deadline has been extended, so there is more time to do that. If it's something that you've pushed off, you should have received something in the mail in order to be counted for the census and then you just go online and it takes two minutes. It's really easy to do and very important to be counted.
Thank you. Anyone else any announcements? Okay, I have a few. First, on a very happy note, I'd like to announce that the Gahn family has another addition. Mary Elizabeth Gahn was born Saturday, May 9th, eight pounds, 10 ounces. We're almost close to having our own baseball team over here in North Scranton, so we're thrilled and everyone's healthy and happy, so that's great. Thank you, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Also, if there are any groups or organizations that are offering free services or assistance to someone in need during the pandemic and you'd like to have that information available on ECTV, you can always email chrisectv@gmail.com. The wording of your email is exactly what ECTV will publish. Also, as I mentioned last week, really great event, the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority is going to sponsor another free lunch at Naught Park. It's going to take place Saturday, May 16th, 1:00 p.m. They're going to be serving 300 lunches. Those lunches will be distributed, first come, first served. This is a takeout event. It will be held at the maintenance building across from the pool at Naught. On the menu, hamburger, hot dog, chips, cookies and a drink. And as we know, there are many people who are having difficulties financially, so if anyone would like a meal, that's going to be held May 16th and Representative Marty Flynn will provide pizza vouchers for the event while supplies last, all are welcome. And finally, if anyone would like to comment on agenda items or general city business, please send those comments in writing to our City Clerk Lori Reed by emailing lreed@scranthonpa.gov. Council will accept public comment until the day of our meeting, Tuesday at 4:30 p.m. Public comment is reviewed by the council prior to our meeting and is placed on the official record and in the minutes of our meeting. Our agenda is being posted for public review the Friday before our Tuesday meeting. Our agenda and minutes can be accessed by going to www.scrantonpa.gov and clicking on the City Council. That's all I have, Mrs. Reed?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Will someone please make a motion to accept public comment from the following individuals? Bev DeBaros, Fay Frannis and Marie Schumacher.
So move.
There's a motion and a second on the question. On the question, just want to state again, Ms. Schumacher had submitted several questions that she had the last few weeks. So again, taking these questions and getting them to the appropriate departments and the administration and I have personally contacted Ms. Schumacher with answers to some stormwater questions. I know Councilman Dunnehy responded to some questions last week, so we are following up on those requests. Ms. Frannis had a few questions as well, so we did send those questions to the administration and we are going to be awaiting a response on that. Anyone else on the question? Okay, and just before we take a vote here, public comment is always placed into our official record and our official minutes. If you would like to view the public comment in the questions, you can go to www.scrantonpa.gov and you can go to council's webpage and you'll be able to see everything transcribed as if we were in City Hall at our, one of our regular council meetings prior to the pandemic. We have a motion, a second, we performed on the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. The ayes have it, so. Mrs. Reed?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Thank you, Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Yes, I do have a few comments. So the council did get some correspondence from Kohanski and Company regarding the 2019 financial statement audit. They gave us a little timeline of events over the month of April, so as of April 5th, they began uploading information to Rainey and Rainey. On the 20th, they had a virtual meeting with Pat Sheridan, Rebecca McMullin and Tom Rainey. They discussed the challenges of preparing and conducting this audit remotely during this time and they decided that due to the volume of information, they were going to do it section by section and be notified when sections of the audit were ready to begin working on it. So as of, let's see, May 6th, they determined that the following sections were ready, including long-term liabilities, long-term debt, compensated absences and accrued interest and the debt service fund. As of April 29th, Kohanski and Company requested some census data from Thomas Anderson, which the council was aware of, and they expect their deadline for completion to be September 30th of 2020 for that audit.
Thank you for the update, Councilman Schuster. Councilman McCandrew, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Excuse me, I just, I just got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sorry.
So I was glad to hear that two of our county commissioners spoke about how they felt that the local government should be, you know, in communication with the governor to decide what's best for their particular areas. And I really want to state that I agree with Commissioners Naterianie and Shermack that we need to have an open dialogue with the governor for our area at this time. I think we're in a specific situation here, it's a unique situation where we have a district who's in recovery and we have a city that's looking to exit Act 47. And with that being said, I don't think we have, we can't afford to lose any money at this point in time, especially millions of dollars. So I'm glad to hear that these people are speaking up, trying to get some dialogue with the governor and I'd like to see that dialogue continue. I know Luzerne County is having a meeting tonight as to how they're going, but I mean, my major concern is our small businesses in Scranton. Like I was saying, we don't have the opportunity to lose anything and some of the numbers I've seen on small businesses are quite concerning and I think the administration feels the same way. Maybe I'd like to encourage anybody who has a small business to write into public comment and maybe we can get some of that on the record and maybe that could help us to move forward. Also, with this task force, I hope that the task force on reopening is, they're utilizing that to speak with the governor and get that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schuster. Councilman McCandrew, any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. So I know that the city pools, the city pools won't be opening this year, but it's been brought to my attention if Ms. Reed can send a letter to OECD and ask when the cameras are going to be put up at the splash pad because I guess there's some new graffiti and some vandalism going on. So if she could please look into that for me, because I know we got a timeline, but I'm not sure where they're at with the cameras, this maybe will help prevent that. Also, at Capous Avenue Tires, which is a garage that has tires, I guess, a couple citizens reached out to me and I guess it was reported to the Lips Department that there are dozens of used tires out front and of the building near the street, which, you know, now it's going to get warm and, you know, with moisture, there'll be some mosquito problems. So if Ms. Reed can also reach out to Lips Department, see where we're at with that complaint. Also, we discussed this, Solicitor Hayes brought this up in our caucus, but this is the third week and I'm going to request for the amount of hours. I know it's forthcoming, but it's three weeks, so I'm throwing it out there again that the amount of hours we paid, which was $89 an hour to the acting HR director. So I'm still waiting to hear about them hours. Also, a follow-up, there's, I guess, a couple complaints were sent to the Lips Department. There's this three-stall garage that's being rented on 324 Crown Avenue. So it's a rented garage, but my understanding is someone is actually using that as a service garage. If Ms. Reed can follow up with that, I guess a couple complaints have been, you know, sent to Lips Department and just want to find out where we're at with that. And also, another concerned citizen brought up to me, now it's nice though, people are out walking. My understanding that all the catchwater basins from Taylor Hill to North Scranton are blocked with debris. So if Ms. Reed, if you can please reach out to DPW and see if they can address that. That is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McCandrew. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I just have one comment and it's in reference to what Councilman Schuster brought up regarding our small businesses and I actually meant to bring it up in announcements too, but there are a lot of businesses that are opening back up again, like food businesses that are doing curbside pickup. So I would just want to make people aware that places that might have not been opened a few weeks ago are opening now, maybe they have a capacity now or they've gotten the supplies so that they can have takeout orders, usually for businesses that don't do that. And I know I've been trying to support them as much as possible and not just because I'm tired of cooking, but if, you know, if you're able to, then that's a great way to be able to give back to our community and our small businesses are part of what makes Scranton so great. You know, a lot of family businesses that have been around for a long time and I would hate to see. businesses that have been around for a long time and I would hate to see any of them close and, and not reopen uh, because of what's going on right now with, with coronavirus. But I just encourage people to try to be as patient as possible and, and that, um, you know, I think, uh, what they're, that, from what I've read and, and seen that, um, you know, we're just trying to make sure that we're not having, uh, we're no longer having an increase in, in deaths. And having that lowered before, uh, before we're able to reopen, to keep everyone, everyone safe. Um. So, uh, just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. And Councilman Donahue, do you have any motions or comments?
Um, just one quick comment and then I have a motion. Uh, Ms. Reed, would you be able to add, uh, the Pittston Avenue catch basins to Mr. McAndrew's request as well? It's basically the same thing from Music Street all the way to Mo- Music.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'd also like to make a motion to, uh, have Ms. Reed forward this letter to, that, uh, Attorney Hayes put together for us to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, uh, regarding the Keystone Sanit- Sanitary Landfills, uh, permit application, ex- expansion permit application.
And a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second on the question? Um, on the question, I did talk to Dr. Rothschild, uh, in the time between the caucus and the, uh, the regular meeting, and, uh, she did have time to, to review the letter. So I do appreciate that. Um. Oh, you know, I, my comments last week, um, I'll reiterate those, uh, very briefly that I think that this is really one of the most important issues that our region has faced in terms of, um, health and safety, um, in a, in a very long time. I think it is, uh, the issue uh, in terms of something that one of our agencies in the state of Pennsylvania has control over, and that agency is supposed to serve the people and, uh, not anyone else. And in the letter, uh, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do want to read one section from this letter, uh, that was drafted by Attorney Hayes. And it states it was in this, um, "That spirit that your agency's predecessor agency, the Department of Environmental Resources, was created in nineteen seventy. Around that same time, the Commonwealth adopted a new constitution, which in, including section twenty-seven, uh, which provided, uh, the people have a right to clean air, pure water, and to the preservation of the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. Pennsylvania's public natural resources are the common property of all the people, including generations, generations yet to come. As trustees of these resources, the Commonwealth shall conserve it, conserve and maintain them for the benefit of all the people." Again, as I mentioned last week, to think that my children, their children, generations from now, you're going to be looking in this city, from our city and in this valley, at a garbage dump that's as high as the Empire State Building is, it's unconscionable, uh, to all of us, uh, all of council. And that's one of the reasons why we're sending this letter. Um, I think this is probably, uh, our, kind of our last, uh, gasp here for a chance at, at stopping this thing. The Friends of Lackawanna have done an outstanding job and, uh, the team of people that they have in putting forth arguments and, and fighting the battle here. I would ask that anyone in the public, uh, provide comment, um, against this because it is going to have uh, overreaching impact on us, uh, whether we know it or not today, generations, uh, from now. And I think that the health, safety, and welfare of our people, uh, are very important. And again, we're trying to clean up the image, not only of Scranton, but of the area. And to have, uh, a garbage dump basically be, uh, the thing that sticks out is not right. We, we, the days of taking everyone else's garbage should be over. And for those who use the argument, where are you going to put the garbage? I would challenge you to look at other cities, other areas throughout our country who have used technology to move in different, uh, ways of disposing of their garbage, um, that are more safe than what's going on now. So I think we should really be thinking not only about right now, but ten, twenty, thirty years from now. So I, I support the motion, I support the letter, and, uh, thank you to Attorney Hayes for, uh, drafting it. Anyone else on the question?
I'd just like to thank Attorney Hayes for also drafting this letter. Uh, you know, I think it hits, you know, where we're coming from right on the head. So thank you, Attorney Hayes.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I agree. I'd also like to say thank you, but, um, I'm also just really happy that our, our council is all in agreement of this. And I think that's powerful, uh, and I really hope that this letter, uh, adds some value, uh, to the conversation and, and that DEP will take it into, uh, consideration because, uh, we really are concerned about the effects that this will have on our city and, um, for the future to, to come for our children, our grandchildren.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Great job, uh, Solicitor Hayes.
Thanks. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Councilman Donahue?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just have a few comments. One, uh, spoke to a, a, uh, family in the three thousand block of Collery Avenue. Uh, some quality of life issues that are going on there. Um, so I was in contact with, uh, Mrs. Reed today and that is going to be sent to the appropriate, uh, department. Uh, the last thing that I have is, uh, or two, two things. Uh, Councilman McCandrew mentioned at the, uh, beginning of the meeting, uh, when, you know, we, uh, state that we think about all the people that have passed away in our community. And, uh, Kevin Shaughnessy was the, uh, director of building, buildings and grounds and was a, a well-respected, uh, person in our community and, uh, has a, I know has a young daughter and, um, our hearts and, uh, our prayers go out to, uh, his family. Um, and that's a big loss, uh, for the county because he did a really, uh, great job in that role over the last few years. Also, just want to say in terms of the emergency that we're going through right now, as we all know, the, the, the position that we're in. What I've seen i- in northeastern Pennsylvania is, uh, that our citizens are really, really resilient. Uh, and I, I think that they've done, for the most part, we've done a, a really outstanding job in fighting this pandemic. The one concern that I have though is, uh, with the weather getting nice towards the end of this week, it's going to be seventy-five. Next week, I think it's going to be in the eighties. Um. People are itching to get out, but I just want to remind everyone that this is not over, uh, by a long shot. And we need to continue to follow, uh, Governor Wolf's, uh, orders. We need to continue to follow the CDC guidelines. My biggest concern is our hospitals being overwhelmed. Um, that's what we don't want to see. The doctors and nurses and medical personnel, those people who are putting their lives on the line every day, they, they, they're, have done a such a heroic job. Uh, but if we give up now and we say, well, you know, it's been a couple of months, it's time to move on, it's time to get out. Well, I understand the frustration in terms of small businesses and everything else, and it's, it's just devastating what's gone on. After what I saw today, uh, watching Dr. Fauci, uh, testify in front of the Senate, we need to be very cautious in reopening. We need to be very cautious in the actions that we take. Uh, I'm glad to see that, uh, there, there is a task force in Lackawanna County. Um, I just don't think that we should start taking any of this lightly. And as he said today, if we are too aggressive, if we move too quickly, there's going to be more uh, death and there's going to be more suffering, and that's something that we don't want to see. One of the arguments that, that I've seen that I just, I, I just don't agree with at all is, um, there's, there are people out there who are saying, well, it's only people that are in nursing homes that are, uh, dying from this disease. It's not true. The, the majority of people are dying in nursing homes. That is a tragedy beyond belief. But this virus does not discriminate against old and young, against black and white, against whether you're rich or poor. Um, and the argument that, uh, you know, it just affects older people. Well, if it was your grandmother or your grandfather, I think, and then they were sick, I think your opinion would be different. We need to make sure that we protect all of our people. And if one person had, uh, died from this, I think it would be a tragedy. So again, um, I know the council doesn't play a major role in, uh, some of the things that are going on. It's more on the state level, but we need to be very, very, very cautious and listen to the experts, listen to the scientists. Don't listen to the, the Monday morning quarterbacks who don't have medical degrees. And that's all I have. Uh, Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. Five B for introduction and ordinance authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the Department of Justice BA-FY twenty coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program, a grant in the amount of sixty-four thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars awarded to the City of Scranton Police Department to be used for the purchase of supplies and equipment to respond to, prevent, and protect against the spread of coronavirus.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a, uh, a motion, it's been seconded on the question. Uh, on the question, I, I mentioned this in the caucus, what I'd like to do, and I, I believe everyone was in agreement, would be next week, uh, because of the urgency and, and the importance of getting this funding where it needs to go, uh, for supplies during this crisis, I would like to suspend the rules next week and, uh, move this piece of legislation from sixth to seventh order. So final passage would be next week. Uh, anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Five C for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an addendum to the cooperation agreement binding between the City of Scranton and the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs to further amend the cooperation agreement to permit the Scranton Police Department's Force Entry Tactical Team to move all explosive entry training operations and activities to the new location depicted in Exhibit A one and cease to use the previously approved area of the Leech Range property located in Newton Township and South Abington Township.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A, no business at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone. This meeting is adjourned. Stay safe, stay healthy.